Paul Roz. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to enjoyment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Commissioner Mary Janoff.
I want to thank all of you for being here tonight in the spirit of the Lord. We're here to make a lot of decisions in the spirit of the Lord, and God is going to watch over all of you, especially since you've been here, came here tonight. He gave you safe passage, and I ask that He gives you safe passage when you go home. I want to share with you Mark eight thirty-six. What good is for a man to gain the whole world yet forfeit his soul? And I ask that tonight that the Heavenly Father will watch over all of us as we make decisions, talk about issues, and in His Spirit of kindness and love for all of us, I ask Him to come into our hearts and be a part of this meeting tonight. And not only tonight, but after we leave tonight, that we all learn to love one another and to have faith in each other and know that not everybody thinks alike, not everybody makes decisions the same, but we are one people and we live in a wonderful country. And God has a watch over our country, and I pray that our country will be prosperous and we will all live in God's will. Something else that I wanted to share with you was Corinthians. It says, "Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom." And we all need our freedom. We have freedom to love, to be happy, to be mean, to be nice. We have all kinds of freedom in our country, and God watches over us. So I'd ask you to bow your head right now as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you before you and ask for you to give us guidance and clarity in all of those things that we are working through. We have hard jobs. Many of us work and many of us don't. Many of us have grandchildren and their families, and I pray, Lord, that you'll watch over every single person in this room and outside of this room and give them the things they need, the ways that they need to be prosperous, to learn to love and know you, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that you will come into every single person's heart. Even if you don't believe in God, we still love you. God loves you, and I ask that you learn to know Him if you can. I want to thank all of you for being here in God's will, and God, thank you for giving us this opportunity. I trust in you, Lord. I have faith in you, Lord, and I know, God, that you will watch over all of us, and I thank that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Remain standing, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, call the row.
Each Commissioner record your presence.
We have twenty-two members present tonight. Commissioner Pomeroy is out of town on business, and Commissioner Moss, of course, visited with him this afternoon in Westmoreland. His mother passed away, and visitation is today and funeral service is tomorrow. So keep in mind that a majority vote still remains at thirteen, two-thirds vote at sixteen. We have several things that you may have signed up for tonight. We have several hearings on property, and also we have the regular county agenda. Now, I understand that something of a great interest may be pulled from the agenda, and if you're speaking on that item, our commission rules say that we will speak only to items on the agenda. So if you have signed up for something that is not on the agenda or has been pulled from the agenda, then you should not be speaking on that matter tonight, but whenever it is I would like for you to place on your agenda an award from the SAR to Tammy Weatherford and her family. We also need to...
It'll go on the report of the chair.
It'll go on the report of the chair. Also, we will be very, probably at the end of budget, we'll all be ready to tear out of here, but please don't do that. There's one item over on a third page that's very important to get done tonight, and that is tax refunds. So just don't anyone leave too quickly this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So because we had delays last Monday, we pressed to do our Budget Committee this Monday in order to abide by public notice law, we put a bunch of things on here that were pending. Many of these, we either required a second reading and we did not get a waiver on it for that second reading for our rules, or we just made a motion to continue to keep these on to old business. So if everybody would go ahead and be prepared here to take note, several of these are going to be struck. So item one, Brown Park, that one is struck. We'll bring that up next commission meeting for our last vote. Item two, hearing of items on the twelfth, so we got one of those done, but did not waive the second reading on it. So that one is struck. Item number four, five and six are all struck. Item number nine, ten, and eleven did not get unanimous votes, so couldn't get a second reading. Those are struck. Item number, the rest of these mostly are, will remain on, but please note that item number seventeen, there should be a handout on your, a separate handout on your paper here. It'll have the department as Drug Court. It's forty-five thousand dollars. It's, the amount is the same, but some of the sub-items are changed, so please refer to that document, not the one on your packet. The rest of these, I believe, Mr. Chairman, to include the tax refunds, we will be handling tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other changes? Mr. Becker.
I'd like to add an item, discussing the roundabout situation in Hendersonville, allowing the city to tie into Countryside Drive.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite under, you were looking down, and I didn't quite understand what you were saying.
I was reading off the sheet. The, I want to add an item, the roundabout in Hendersonville, allowing the city of Hendersonville to tie into the Countryside Drive.
All right, motion and a second. Well, we'll just have that there, and then we'll go to the approval of the agenda. I don't think there's any objection to that.
Is that under Highway Committee, I guess?
Pardon?
You want to put that under Highway, or?
I'll put that under Highway.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I just, I have to say that on behalf of these citizens here, I objected it being added. We talked about it in Highway, and I just, I think it's too big of an ordeal, too big of an impact on their lives to just add it willy-nilly to the agenda.
All right. Since there is objection, we will vote on that, whether to add it or not, and I'll ask that it be on the board so that we can't make any mistake about that. If you would add that to the board, Madam Clerk. Green, of course, will be to hear it, and red will be to not hear this tonight on the roundabout.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
This will not be heard tonight. The vote was twelve to ten. We would like for you to please hold your applause, if you will, and also remember, those of you who signed up to speak on the Brown property, you will not be allowed to speak tonight, but when that comes up next time on the agenda. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. All right, and one no. We have the agenda set, approval of the minutes for the twelfth. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Approval of minutes for August twenty-sixth. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. All right. Recognition of the public.
Mr. Chairman. I just want to get something real quick.
I want to change my vote to no on approving the regular agenda for the record, because
there's a lot of citizens that have reached out to me about the roundabout. So I'm just going to go on record as not being for this agenda as it stands. So I'm going to change my vote to no.
All right. Actually, Roberts Rules of Orders, and we'll let that go, that was one thing I was going to mention tonight, says that after the vote has been announced by the chair, no one can change their vote. But, all right.
Mr. Chairman, it's our standing rules state that you can change your vote up until the end of the meeting by standing up and announcing. Can our standing rules trump Roberts rules? But it's stated.
Thank you for the advice. All right. Please keep in mind that if you're speaking on an item that is not on the agenda, you would please just excuse yourself. Ms. Donna DiSofo.
I think this is for the agenda.
All right. Charles Kimbrough Jr. Kara Kimbrough.
Virginia O'Leary.
Phil O'Leary. Mark Evans. Mark Evans. Tom Golden. Christina Baker. Gary Bender Mullen. Ryan Bradford. Chris Little. Or Litter. Rachel Collins. Elizabeth Michael. Jim Latimer. Tommy Latimer. Cynthia McCleod. Eddie Robertson. Donna...
That's me.
Is that you again?
Yeah, for the other one.
Donna? Okay. All right. Mike McCleod. Diane Stinson. Charlena. Donna Ho. No, Al Miller. Donna Ho, I'm sorry. Okay. We're going to a class on writing.
I might like to see this.
Kevin Bagert. Laura Bagert.
I was going to speak on the roundabout.
Well, we hit a hundred percent, folks. That's good. Under report of the chair. We have a recognition by the SAR. If you would come forward at this time, please, gentlemen, everyone involved with
My name's David Tredway. I'm the president of the Colonel Anthony Bledsoe Chapter of SAR, which is Sons of the American Revolution. To be a member, we have to have a direct descendant that fought, excuse me, in the revolution or participated in some form. It's actually an international organization that was established in the late eighteen-hundreds. And one of the things that we do is education, especially with young people. We try to teach young people about the founding of our nation. But one of the other things we do is we recognize the local heroes, first responders and others, and that's what brings me here tonight. In our August meeting, Richard Perkins, chairman of our Heroism and Recognition Committee, put a vote forward to recognize Sheriff Weatherford with the SAR Law Enforcement Commendation. And the vote was unanimous, and the state organization expedited things so that we have the medal and the certificate tonight to present. So it is, just like our patriots that we honor through SAR, the Sheriff Weatherford gave thirty-nine years of putting himself in harm's way, the same way our patriots did, and that's what we are here to honor him tonight. So I have, it's my great honor, on behalf of the Colonel Anthony Bledsoe Chapter of SAR, to present the Law Enforcement Commendation Medal to Mrs. Tammy Weatherford on behalf of your husband, Roy Sonny Weatherford.
I would like to have the clerk at this time read a thank you card that was sent to the commission from the Weatherford family.
We have been blessed by the outpouring of love and support shown to our family during this difficult time. Every card, gift, and dinner has been very appreciated. Even more so, we have felt the love, good thoughts, and especially prayers that have been sent our way. With love and appreciation, the Weatherfords, Tammy, Michael, Dustin, and family.
Thank you. Also, if you will, this Veterans Service Report is in your packet. The financial statements are in your packet. And then the third thing that I wanted to mention was that I am asking for, I'm not asking, I am appointing an ad hoc committee to advise me on ways to make our commission more efficient and operational, and that will then be passed on to whatever committee, such as legislative or whoever is in the way of suggestions. But we have been bogged down, folks, in a lot of ways in this commission, and we're doing the work of the public, and it ought to be done efficiently. We should be hearing people, certainly, and that's not what I'm talking about, but it ought to be done efficiently. We've set some records. I don't know beyond me, I've been here thirty-two years, but beyond me, there may have been a four-hour committee meeting, but I don't remember one. But it just, this will be just something to make suggestions on anything that will make our operation more efficient, and then it'll be passed on to the right people. And there are a lot of little things, too, that I want to mention. Just one thing now that we've been cleared up on the changing of votes. One thing that we often overuse on the commission is point of order. I hear that pretty often. Now, if someone wants to say, well, the commission chairman is a half-brained old man, that would not be very nice. But it's not to the level of inflammatory. You understand? That's a high level. And I talked to somebody that knows a little bit more than I do about parliamentary procedure. That's a high bar, okay? It's not nice to say, and I might ask you to tone it down, but that's not reaching the level of inflammatory. We don't need to single out anyone. There's always a way of saying, well, the commissioner from the twentieth district or this particular issue, but let's not single out people and blast them for things that they've said or not said, or want to do or not do. The people that I have asked to serve on this committee to make recommendations and brainstorm with me are Commissioner Terry Boyt, Commissioner David Klein, Commissioner Darrell Rogers, Commissioner Mark Harrison, and Commissioner Don Schmidt. So any suggestions that we have, I ask you to start brainstorming, see one of those people, and let them know what your suggestions might be. At this time, the county clerk will read a hearing on a public notice.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven o'clock PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Crane Scotty Parker, PUD rezoning. Jared Crane, represented by Green LID Design, Fourth Commission Voting District, Dylan Lambert. Applicant is seeking to rezone subject property from rural preservation to planned unit development for the purpose of constructing and operating construction, sales, and services used upon the subject property. Subject property is located at Scotty Parker Road, Gallatin, Tennessee, three seven oh six six, is on tax map zero nine two, parcel zero five seven point zero zero, contains forty-one point thirty-seven acres, and is zoned rural preservation. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a recommendation related, a positive recommendation related to this item on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend this meeting or call six one five four five one six oh nine seven. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
Do we have anyone signed? Sorry, I couldn't get that last night.
I got a little sloppy with my handwriting. Andy Leath, one one four B, West Main Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm the project applicant or representative of the applicant. I'd just like to highlight a few aspects of this project before I cede my time here. It's approximately forty-one point four acres, and it is being proposed to be the home of three thriving businesses here in Sumner County that currently exist. This site would be divided into four tracks. One track would remain vacant, approximately ten acres each. With the plan that's before you tonight, we've provided enhanced buffer yards to screen the operations from the surrounding community. We've provided exaggerated setbacks that pull the buildings up to a hundred fifty-five feet away from the property lines. There is a creek that runs through the property. We're staying out of the flood plain entirely, staying out of the stream buffers, and we're providing over eighty percent open space. So when you look at the plan, we are providing space for ten or three businesses to grow in Sumner County, but while still leaving eighty percent of this in grass and green space. So I feel like this is a very good project for the county, allows business to grow, doesn't tax the school system, doesn't tax EMS and emergency services, and allows three Sumner County businesses to continue their operations. Thank you.
Stephanie Wilks.
Stephanie Wilks, and I live at seventeen sixty-five Scotty Parker Road, and our nine point two five acres is on the northern boundary of the proposed development site. My family has lived on that piece of land since nineteen sixty-four, so roughly six My family has lived on that piece of land since nineteen sixty-four, so roughly sixty years, and we've always had forty acres next to us that basically ran cattle. I think last month, y'all had a fairly long meeting, changing the zoning on this particular piece of property from rural residential to rural preservation. And I am the next property in line, so my property is now rural preservation. My family is for rural preservation, and we feel like the intent of the rural preservation rezoning classification does not allow for forty acres of farmland to be turned into three commercial businesses. I think the Crane companies are good. I think he does nice professional work. It's a very professional group of companies, but I do not feel like their commercial businesses belong in the forty acres of farmland that is now under the designation of rural preservation next to my property that is rural preservation. The road that runs in front of this property is Scotty Parker Road, which people that have lived here for a long time know that that used to be Highway one oh nine. So it used to be a main thoroughfare. At this point in time, it is a fairly lazy road, and the only people that travel that road are basically the people that live on it. There is a hill that's in the proximity to this forty acres, and the middle company that's going in on the land is an excavation company, so there will be lowboys and large trailers coming out with heavy equipment, and there is a reduced line of sight because of that hill, so I feel like there's a possibility that we could have accidents. Also, the road has become a fairly busy bike path or back bike road. I went to get my mail the other day, and I wasn't paying very close attention, and all of a sudden, I looked up and the bicyclist almost was getting me. I mean, I can hear when a car is coming, but I couldn't hear him on his bicycle. So a lot of people use that road so they can go up to the ridge and enjoy the beauty up there. So I think the Crane people will do what they've said, as Andy said, they were going to give setbacks and things, but it is still taking forty acres of farmland that will never be farmland again. It will be commercial from this point forward, and I feel like the businesses can go somewhere else in the growth areas of the county. Thank you.
My name is Jared Crane. I'm a resident at one sixty-three Lawrence Town Road in Gallatin, Tennessee, and I am the president of these companies and the owner, and just would ask that you would vote in favor of this project. We've been in business in Sumner County for almost twenty-five years, grew up here working here, have, grew up with school here in Sumner County, and we have literally just made our whole living working for folks like you in Sumner County and try to do our best to do a really good job. We have grown into three different companies, and we are looking to put it on this forty acres. Unfortunately, we're not an industrial-type company that can go out off Airport Road and spend the kind of money that Facebook and these guys are coming in, Simpson Strong Ty, and are buying all that land. We're not those large companies. We need something more affordable that we can operate out of. We are very, we are construction-oriented, but we're very agricultural-related. We do landscaping and excavation and things like that, but we're also farmers. We raise cattle, and we will have some cattle on this land, on the ten acres, and most guys will probably come in and try to use twenty of this forty to put these businesses on there. It probably would be a smarter financial move, but I want to be respectful of the neighbors. I want to be respectful of the community, and I want to do it the right way. A lot of people would probably try to throw up some shops and operate out of it till somebody raised a fuss, but we've been at it for a year now, trying to get this done the right way, and we appreciate y'all's time. As far as the road, I think it's, you know, couldn't be a better road for what we're trying to do because it's not very busy, and we're very much in and out. We're not going to have people come in, in and out all day long, every day. It's not a retail center where people are coming in. It's come in, get your stuff, leave, and two of the three companies, most of those guys just go straight to the site. So I don't want to take any more of your time, but I do appreciate your vote on this.
Would the commissioner from this district choose to say anything? You do not have to, but if you'd like to, all right. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed, and we will vote on the matter. Commissioner Mansfield.
Without objection, we have the plan director.
Answer some questions.
Is there any objection, anyone? Then we don't have to vote on that. We'll let him come forward and say what he'd like.
Sir.
I just, I might be missing it. I'm not sure. I love the fact that it's commercial and not residential. With the rezoning of this PUD, should the landowner not do?
Commercial.
Or if it got rezoned, what's the process for turning it into residential?
So it's currently zoned residential. Right now, the zone, it's rural preservation is the zoning, and so the process to subdivide the property would just basically consist of submitting a subdivision plat to the planning commission, and that would, they do preliminary plats, what they would be required to do. The minimum lot size would be the two point three acres, so one hundred thousand square feet. Of course, you know, the yield on the number of lots, you know, would be determined by, you know, the creek that runs through it and that kind of thing, but it has forty acres, and so you could probably get somewhere in the vicinity of twenty lots, fifteen to twenty lots out of it.
So rezoning it to this, I'm not talking about the current zoning, rural preservation, I'm talking about if you get rezoned this new PUD, would that be allowable? Does that still fall under, would it have to be rezoned again to be residential on that point, rezoning back? Okay.
So is a planning and development that has a specific square footage of commercial buildings and specific uses that are allowed as part of the PUD, residential's not one of them, and so if they wanted to change their mind and bring in a residential component, they'd go all the way back through this process again to come to the county commission.
What are the three businesses that I didn't quite catch that are being built there?
Mr. Lee, I think there's a lawn care business, there's like a concrete business, and then there's a making concrete, there's like a concrete.
That are taken off-site, basically. And an excavation business is the other one. And so we classify all those under the construction, sales, and services heading, so they're all part of the construction industry. They're not industrial, but they're part of the construction business.
Is this one building, is that my understanding? This is one, how large is it?
So it's forty acres in total, divided into four tracts, and so the lawn care business will be on one ten-acre tract. This is approximate, about ten acres. The excavation company will be on another one, and the concrete company will be on a third ten-acre tract, and then there'll be another ten-acre tract that's just going to remain vacant. They don't have any plans at all for it.
So this is, there'll be three separate building sites as part of this?
That's right, that's right. It's a total of about thirty thousand square feet, thirty-five thousand square feet of building space in total on forty acres.
Okay. I heard, I guess there was one resident that was opposed to it, the immediate neighbor. Were there any other residents that came and spoke out against this at the planning commission, or did it send any planning commissioners?
I don't recall a big turnout. There may have been one or two other folks that came with questions and that kind of thing to the planning commission, but I don't recall the exact numbers. I do remember, the lady that spoke earlier, I do remember her being there at the planning commission.
So she wasn't the only one as a neighbor that was in opposition?
I can't remember, just to be honest with you, how many people came. I just, I recall that it wasn't a big turnout against it necessarily. I think there were a couple people there with concerns, and to their credit, the Green Lit folks have amended the plan to try to satisfy those concerns and added landscape buffering and that kind of thing to mitigate as best as they can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll ask Commissioner Wright.
Do you have any idea how many employees these three businesses have?
Yes, sir. We drill down on that pretty. Pretty close. That was a big question that we had, because certain numbers of trips can trigger a traffic study and those kinds of things, and so the number that they gave us was about, I believe it was about forty-something employees in total.
Total.
Yeah, I believe so. That's the number, and I may have to defer to Mr. Lee again on the business specifics. That's the number I saw in the paperwork today when I went back through everything. I think a lot of those employees are like lawn care employees who don't actually go there, very much anyway. They're typically off-site mowing yards.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to place this on the board.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second? All right, we'll place that on the board.
Anyone wishing to change their vote?
All right, we have sixteen to five with one abstention, so that does pass. Next, we will move on to the Lewis Head property. If I could be passed that.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Lewis Head Commercial Plaza, PUD, major plan amendment number one. Lewis Head, represented by six one five Design Group, Fourth Commission Voting District, Dylan Lambert. Applicant is seeking a major plan amendment of an existing PUD for the purpose of modifying proposed building layout. Proposed uses comply with existing entitlements. Subject property is located at one thirty-five West Roberts Road, Portland, Tennessee, three seven one four eight. It's tax map zero seven two, parcel zero three five point zero six, contains five point zero five acres, and is zoned planned unit development. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a negative recommendation related to this item on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting or call six one five four five one six oh nine seven. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for a public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
We have two people who have signed up to speak to this issue, Robert Edens.
Hello, I'm Robert Edens from one four one West Roberts Road. I've been coming here for the last year, talking about this pub, as it went from strip mall to storage units. We have put out a presentation, which all of y'all should have gotten. If you haven't gotten it, I've got one here, y'all can share and look at. The presentation showed where that land currently drops off in elevation very fast all the way down West Roberts Road. On May eighth, we had a major water flood. It went across my driveway, all the way across my property and down the, all across my neighbor's property and the rest of them. This area, if we turn it to concrete and buildings, there is no place for the ground to soak up this water. It's just going to make it worse, and you're talking five acres of nothing but buildings and concrete. In these pictures and everything that I showed you, I showed you the devastation that it did, and also you had other people come in and tell you how it washed out their driveways and stuff like that, and we have people four houses down from me that are spring water and well water. They're not unsidly water, so any contamination that comes off this concrete is going to go into their property and into their drinking water. The spring, we have two different routes. One is directly behind the back of my property, which is a creek bed that runs back here. That water goes there, or it goes crossing the front down the side of the road. Also, the entranceway into West Roberts Road is a thirty-degree turn. Currently, you can come out there and watch school buses stop. If somebody's at the stop sign, school buses will stop on one oh nine before they can enter in. They have to let people leave West Roberts Road. We have tractor trailers coming in now that's going to the dollar store. We had Brad Rau, which is a deputy sheriff at committee and committees meeting last month, come and talk to them, talk to y'all. Pretty much, he has told y'all that the traffic has gotten worse out there because of the dollar store. It ain't just community anymore. It is more traffic is coming, and this is a bad intersection as it is. It is not a forty-five degree, I mean, a ninety-degree intersection. It is a lot sharper turn. If they're really, we've had a lot of people talk to y'all over the last year. Like I said, I've been here for the last year, coming up almost every month, talking over the same thing, showing y'all the pictures, showing y'all what happened on May eighth. Please don't let our community be ran over like this. It was, they were zoned for one building, one building as far as a construction for a maintenance area for this area. That's all they're zoned for. To take up five acres in concrete with no, nothing to take up that water, it's not going to help us in any way, shape, or form, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
CJ Merrell with six one five Design Group, one five one seven Hung Club Boulevard, representing the applicant. I myself have been involved in this project over the last little bit, coming to all the various meetings. Whenever we first started this process, I will state that I was not involved in the previous PUD that was on this, on this property. The current PUD is zoned for one building. I think it's approximately ten to twelve thousand square feet on five acres. Originally, our original application showed an additional three buildings, so a total of four buildings on ten acres. We had a neighborhood meeting at the very beginning of this. It was not a big turnout, I believe only one couple showed up. After the planning commission meeting that we initially went to, we actually held and reached out to the various neighbors that spoke out at that meeting. Robert was one of those neighbors. We actually met with Robert in person to discuss his concerns for the project. After that meeting, we cut our project in half and went from four buildings to two buildings on this property. He mentioned the stormwater. Obviously, at this level of the project, we're not in design, full site design for the project. We have done preliminary design, and we are showing two detention ponds on site that would control the water leaving the site. We're actually required to do that per Sumner County rules and regulations. The open space that we have on site is roughly fifty to sixty percent, so we're not covering the entire property with concrete and asphalt. We have a pretty excessive buffer along the western side, which is one of the items that was heavily discussed, not only at the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission meeting, but also with Mr. Edens, and we're adhering to that buffer. All we're asking for is an additional building to the original PUD that is already in place. The original PUD has various uses that are approved, and we're asking to go from a building that was ten to twelve thousand square feet to two buildings that are eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. What this would do is this would allow for flex space to be provided in the county and provide the necessary means for businesses to run and operate within the county so people don't have to leave the county to go to work. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Would the commissioner from this district choose to make a statement? All right, I declare the hearing closed, and I seek Commissioner Rogers in the queue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not the commissioner of this district, but I believe there was one more person wanting to speak for public comment, Joey Rush. I don't know if he's signed up or not, but I do have a question, if we could suspend the rules for the representative.
Is there any objection? Is there any objection? I must assume that it's unanimous unless there's an objection, okay. Come to this mic up here if you will.
What are the buildings or businesses that's being proposed to be put here?
So the, the interest that my client has had on these buildings is mainly, mainly construction companies, not just construction companies that would have a lot of equipment outside, but like an electrician or an HVAC company that would need flex space to have and hold inventory inside a building where the majority of the work would be going on. And normally, in those types of businesses, there's not a ton of work going on onsite or even in the building. It's a place for them to house inventory where they can put onto their box trucks and take out to their projects and install. Like I said, in, in the original PUD, there are laundry list of uses that were approved. I think that the interest that my client has received only adheres to a handful of those uses, but the, but the main ones he was looking at to utilize was more of a local HVAC or electric company, if that helps explain.
Still a manufacturing company?
No, sir.
How many semis do you think would be in and out of this property a day?
I don't think very many. We have provided turning templates to show what a semi could do on this property because that was a requirement of, of staff. But I think that the vast majority of the trucks that would be entering this site would be smaller trucks.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, I'm not trying to run you to death. What, where would the point of entry be? Would it be on Highway one oh nine or would it be on Roberts Road?
No, sir, so there is an existing entry into the original PUD, which is the entry into the Dollar General. So you would, for folks that are going to the Dollar General, they would pull in the entry and go left. These, for this site, they would pull in the entry and go right. And is, I think the entry is plus or minus two hundred feet from one oh nine. So it would allow people to fully turn onto West Roberts Road and then make an entry into this site.
Mr. Chairman, last question if we could. Has there been a traffic study done by T. Dot on the impact of traffic coming in and out of Roberts Road with the semis or box trucks?
To my knowledge, no. Now, are you referring to a traffic study that is specifically for this site or just in general?
A traffic study that affects what you're representing tonight for a state route, Highway one oh nine and Roberts Road, based on the uses that you intend for this property?
So the, there was never any discussion or requirement for us to have a traffic study done on this site because of, I guess, the small request to only add one building. That is certainly something that we, we discussed in the pre-app and certainly something that we could, we could request or perform. But at, at the end of the day, from a, from any kind of offsite improvements along one oh nine, it would have to be fully warranted by T. Dot to make any of those improvements. But no, to short answer, no, a traffic study has not been done. I don't know if there was a traffic study done for the original PUD. Likely there probably was. But as I recall, one has not been done for this addition.
Commissioner Shoef.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, if it's possible, would like to hear a comment from the Chair of the Planning Commission for why this received a negative, negative recommendation, just to summary.
Do you mind, Commissioner Klein? Okay, go ahead while you're up here.
Yes, sir, thank you. Sorry, you, go ahead. You're, you're next. I guess, sir, I just wanted to ask, what business is going in here?
So right, right now, it's to be determined. With the, our request was to simply add a building and adhere to all the requirements that were within the original PUD. The original PUD, like I said, has a laundry list of uses. There was never any discussion about dwindling those uses or removing some. I think that my client would be, potentially be open to removing some uses. However, our request was simple, hey, this PUD has already been approved, we're looking to add a building. Now, like I said to Mr. Rogers, the, the majority of the discussions that I've had with my client and the interest he's gotten on this property are for companies similar to an electrician or an HVAC that need the flex space. So these, basically what these buildings have is they have a small office up front and an inventory, like a, an area in the back for them to store and hold inventory and perform any necessary work that needs to happen indoors. No work is to be, is to be happening outside unless it's, it's minor yard storage. But all the discussions have been centered around those types of uses for the building.
But you have no accurate, you said there would be no semi trucks, but there's no possible way.
So the semi trucks, I didn't say there would be no semi trucks. The, I said very, very few, considering the types of businesses that will be running out of, out of this. The, the site is capable of having a semi truck pull onto it, make a turn and come out. We've, we've shown that that is possible. And we're, the entry into this point is less than two hundred and fifty feet from a major state route.
Mr. Commissioner Harris, did you have a question?
I did, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your stormwater.
Yes, sir.
You were required to have an engineer report on the stormwater, right?
So at, at this point, we've, like I said, we have done preliminary studies on the stormwater for the site. Once we get past this point and the, and the property has been rezoned, we would be required to go through the site, site plan submittal process with the county. At that point, we would be submitting construction documents to the county engineer, which would have a full stormwater report that shows how we meet the requirements of Sumner County, which addresses the, the flow rates and storms, in a two-year storm, five-year storm, ten-year storm, twenty-five-year, fifty-year and a hundred-year storm.
Would you stay here for just a moment, Mr. Merrell? We're gonna let the Chairman of Planning speak.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, as I recall, with the two buildings that they came back with originally, there was gonna be four buildings that are basically ten thousand square foot of warehouse with about a twelve hundred and fifty square foot office. They're, they were going to be all the same kind of building and if I'm not mistaken, they're twenty to twenty-five feet in height.
I believe so, yes, sir, I think twenty-four feet.
The, the reason for the negative recommendation by the Planning Commission, there was primarily a lot of neighbor turnout against it. Number two, Mr. Eden, who spoke earlier, he lives adjacent to it and he's very concerned about the stream that runs at the back of his property. Engineering discipline would explain that, that that can be accommodated by the requirements of settling basins and those kinds of things. But I think primarily this came down to the fact that there was enough resistance by neighbors. Now, having, having said that, I personally believe that it'd be less impactive than a residence. But the neighbors are, the, the Planning Commission is very sensitive to neighbor critique. And so that's in general why the negative declaration came to pass.
Commissioner Miller.
I don't really have a question for him, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm pretty sure that it was a unanimous negative recommendation. One, because the neighbors, two, the flooding, it's flooding out driveways. People on well water, I mean, they don't have access to clean water. If this was, they don't know what's going in there, they don't. The first time I had heard, and I asked a lot of questions, the first time that I heard that they didn't know what kind of business was going in there was tonight. That was not what was represented to us and it still got a negative recommendation. I'm still gonna be voting no on this. I just, I, I can't with good conscience leave someone without clean drinking water, so.
Commissioner Shoef.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is just one more point of clarification. I remember some time ago, a gentleman brought a set of pictures, a set of photos of trucks attempting to turn around on a, on a narrow road. I just want to clarify, is that, is that relevant to, I think that was this development? But I, because it's been in queue for some time, I just want to make sure that that's the case because I, those pictures were compelling. Do we know that that's the case? It's, it's the one, okay, got it. That's all I have.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was wanting to make a comment of, of, I don't even know if we have a motion to discuss or a motion to approve or where we're at on this. But our concern is, and the reason why I asked the questions earlier about the traffic going in and out of there, I live up on that side of the world, God's country, we like to call it on top of the ridge. But there's a lot of accidents that happen on State Route one oh nine. That's a two-lane southbound, two-lane northbound, plus a turning lane right there where the Dollar General is. My concern is if we start having several box trucks coming in and out of there, there's no red light there, there's no stop sign other than the east and west Roberts Road there and then the residential traffic that we have coming through there, we're only compounding the problem. So I would encourage that we follow what planning has done on the next two due to, to the fact that the, I don't, I don't think the roads are built to handle the, the traffic, plus the influx of commercial traffic coming through there, so I'll vote no on the next two items.
All right. Hearing closes, there a motion?
Motion to deny.
All in favor, say aye. Close lights, then. Unanimous vote to deny. And one extension. All right. Public nolet, notice again.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven o'clock P. M. In the Bethel Brown Commissioned Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Lewis Head Commercial Plaza PUD, major plan amendment two. Andrew Finney, represented by Green L. I. D. Design, Fourth Commission Voting District, Dylan Lambert. Applicant is seeking a major plan amendment of an existing PUD for the purpose of modifying table of allowable, allowable uses and modifying proposed building layout for mini storage warehouses. Subject property is located at one thirty-one West Roberts Road, Portland, Tennessee, three seven one four eight. It's tax map zero seven two. Parcel zero three five dot zero seven contains two point seven five acres and is zone planned unit development. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a negative recommendation related to this item on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building, located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend this meeting or call six one five four five one six oh nine seven. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for the public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
Andy Leith.
Thank you. Andy Leith, one one four B, West Main Street, Gallatin, Tennessee. And I do represent the applicant tonight. First, before we get started, I would like to state that even though this is entitled to Lewis Head PUD amendment, this project has nothing to do with Lewis Head. The property in question is owned by a man named Monty Turner and he owns this property. He bought it from Lewis a couple of years ago when he built the Dollar General. So this is a residual tract left over after they developed the Dollar General on the corner. But Lewis Head has nothing to do with this particular project. The site is, is two point seven five acres, as was stated. It is currently approved for a seventy-five hundred square foot facility that is slated to be retail office, a wide array of uses that it could be. But seventy-five hundred square foot facility with associated parking is what it's currently approved and entitled for. What our project tonight seeks to do is add the mini storage use to this. A lot has been brought up tonight about traffic. We, ironically enough, I was the firm that did the original PUD. So we did do a traffic study. Our traffic study analyzed this as a retail, seventy-five hundred square foot retail facility. Went back to the traffic engineer and asked him what it would generate if it was mini storage, even the square footers that we're proposing. It's an eighty percent reduction in traffic because the uses changed from retail where you have customers to mini storage. So tonight, there's been a lot brought up about traffic. Changing to this use would reduce traffic by eighty percent. Whether or not it continues as a seventy-five hundred square foot facility or it's changed to mini storage, the same stormwater requirements are in effect, the same lighting requirements are in effect, the same landscape requirements stay in effect. So if someone comes through next month and wants to do seventy-five hundred square foot facility, it will not be back before this body, it is entitled for it. So we feel like changing is definitely less on traffic and that's proven with our traffic engineer, we submitted that document to Josh, he has that, it's by the public record. So in, in closing here, traffic's been a very, been brought up a lot and this will reduce the traffic by eighty percent if this use is entitled tonight as opposed to the retail facility, so thank you.
Andrew Finney.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Finney, I've been a lifelong Sumner County resident. Went to grade school, middle school, high school, College of Allstate. I've been here my whole life and I've been a local business owner in the area for fifteen years. Have done that with a history of responsible, small development. This is not large companies, this is my family and making a, an investment in the community that we live in, in this type of industry as well, this type of business. They've been aesthetically pleasing to the, to the community. It's benefited the local residents and that community. I would not do something that the community wouldn't like. The business use I'm proposing for this property has no relation to Mr. Lewis Head. I've never met this gentleman. The, the current owner is, is Mr. Montgomery Turner. At the recent Planning Commission meeting, there were several member, members of the community that, that spoke about the, about the, the water issues and, and I understand that. We did have a community meeting for the neighbors, but no one came to that so that we could adequately explain what we were doing and the requirements for the water, stormwater drain off. So when we had the County Planning Commission meeting, there was really no time to explain what Mr. Leith just did. If a business, if, if an owner of this property today wanted to build a seventy-five hundred square foot commercial building on that property, they could and no one could do anything of it. So the, the fact that something will be there is gonna be the same. The question is what will be there? And so that's, that's why I brought this because I believe it will be the most benign use but will also benefit the, the neighbors. The, the water runoff will be the same rain that's coming down regardless. It'll just be caught in a structure, I have other properties. It's caught in a structure and retained, it's held and it runs off. It's gonna go to the same tree line that it does now. It runs away towards one oh nine, not towards the neighbors' properties. Some of the pictures that were used in that, again, those are, that's, that's rainwater that, that would not come from these proposed sites, but the rainwaters in many of those would be, would be many times eliminated by a simple drain tile being installed underneath the driveway. Some of those pictures showed it being stopped, but there was no drain tile under there, so that would resolve some of that. After hearing the concerns of the neighbors, I thought, I thought hard about it, I thought about pulling this off, but I, I wanted to, I thought about if the business would do what they stated. I would never want to pursue anything that would be detrimental to a community and if this did so, I wouldn't be here tonight pursuing the matter. The site is already approved again for a seventy-five hundred square foot retail center and the water drainage requirements are exactly the same. If I wanted to proceed and purchase this property and build what's approved, a retail building, this would increase the traffic to the area. My proposed use would significantly mitigate this, as this traffic study stated. The water will still drain towards one oh nine to the trees as it currently does and it will not make this worse. Whatever establishment is built there will not affect the neighbors with water runoff due to the lay of the land, the way it drains to one oh nine and certainly when it's improved, will do that even to a greater extent. So I wanted to, really what I wanted to do was bring the facts of the. I wanted to, really what I wanted to do was bring the facts of the, of, of that to, to the neighbors, really, and say, this will not make it worse. Any drainage that's going on in those, in those areas is not due to the water that comes from this, because it comes toward one oh nine and back into the trees. For this type of business, the primary consideration comes down to traffic. And that's been stated by, by several of the neighbors. The business will substantially decrease traffic to the area versus a retail establishment. An added benefit is that local residents will have a safe and secure way to store their belongings without having to spend a large amount of money on security fencing or an even more costly storage structure or barn. Uh, somebody's gonna build on the site eventually because it's approved to do so. The neighbors want less traffic, and this will accomplish that. Uh, conclusion, the property, again, is already planned for this development. My proposal, uh, would be one, if not the most benign use for the site, but also a tremendous benefit for the neighbors. So my request for the neighbors and the commission is to reconsider the facts about what the proposed use would do, and add that to the list of proposed uses. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert Edens?
Robert Edens, one four one West Roberts Road. When they presented this to us, and showed it to us up on the big screen, the contour line for this property was dead in the center, and it showed where the elevation dropped forward and backwards. The ridge is in the center. They, Dollar Store did do a real nice thing and put up an underground water system over there. It had been left untouched for three years up until this last weekend. Suddenly, they came and put in bushes, and put in mulching to cover up that drainage to make it look better. Other than that, it's never been touched for three years. They had busted pipes, the whole nine yard. Uh, the tree line that he's talking about is that rear creek that runs across the back of my property that runs down to the rest of the thing. So that's gonna run down into the tree line. It ain't gonna go across one oh nine. Just go out there and take a look. The line runs down, the rock, downhill. We know how water runs. We don't have to ask that question. And anytime you concrete something, or anytime you put up more buildings, and you're talking storage buildings, more water's gonna run off, and there is no place for this water to go. It ain't going in the ground. It's gonna run off. So I don't know what blow, smoke they're blowing, or who they think they're blowing it, but it, you've still got panel trucks coming in, U-Hauls. Something's gotta bring this stuff to the storage units. We got storage units in Portland. We got storage units just four miles up, one oh nine on the right, just as you get in the Gallatin. How much storage units do we need? There's plenty of storage units around. So why? Why are they wanting to do this? Who's it benefiting? It's not benefiting us. Y'all saw a petition that we signed back in January. The whole commu, community signed a petition. It was commit, uh, presented to the commissioner. That petition is right here. I've got a copy of it. Everybody in my neighborhood signed it. Y'all signed it 'cause I sent it out. Y'all saw it, 'cause I sent this whole thing out to everybody. The water that ran across my driveway and everybody else's, everybody got a chance to see it. That water was May fif, May eighth. If y'all wanna see this, I'd be glad to show it to you. But otherwise, just go back in your emails. You'll see it. Committee and committee got a chance to see it. Who are we kidding? This has been going on for a year. A year. Thank you.
Joey Rush?
Good afternoon. I hope everything is behind y'all well. My name's Joey Rush from Portland, Tennessee, one thirty-two West Roberts Road, right in front of this. I'll give you a little, make you think about something that happened one time. You remember down at the Scotty Parker Road and one oh nine, when them four kids from Portland Soccer Team, I mean, uh, bowling team went, got in a bowling match. They're coming back home, and they're gonna turn, for some reason, left to go up, oh, one oh nine, trucked a trailer here to kill two of them. Roberts Road, that's exact, and the state had to come out and redo that whole intersection after that. Roberts Road, the same thing as that is. I mean, you come off of Roberts Road, you gotta go across four lanes of traffic and the middle to get across it. When you think of mini-storage, you think of people pulling trailers, and it's gonna be hard for them to cross that road. It's, 'cause the speed limit's fifty-five, but everybody runs sixty, seventy. It's gonna be hard to judge their, their speed. So we'll see, and I'm surprised it hasn't happened yet, but there's gonna be some little people getting hurt bad there. It already have been. Nobody's been killed, thank goodness. I, I ask you, please, really consider this when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would the, uh, commissioner from this district want to speak on this particular piece of property? All right, is there a motion to approve? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just had to say that, uh, I've heard the citizens, and I, I, I'm very much on the side of them. But there's one piece of information I wanna make sure that you know, that, uh, it, I know that it was said that it's not Lewis Head, but y'all don't know, uh, Andrew Finney, and, and everything I know about him. I mean, I, I think the world of him. I think the world of his, his father-in-law, his mother-in-law, his wife, and his, his three children. And I've spent a lot of time with him. We serve on Deacon Body together. And so, like, not a, not a finer individual. I just, I really do believe that, that his heart is in the right place. I know it. I think he came into a hornet's nest with the, with the Lewis Head property. Um, and I, and I do believe there's a lot of citizens against that, and I think that should definitely be taken into consideration. But just knowing that this man right here, he, he, he's a God-fearing, he wouldn't do anybody wrong. I'd, I'd take my shirt off and give it to him right now if he needed it. And so I just want you to know that that's, uh, I'll, I'll spare everybody from doing that. But, uh, I just, I want you to know how, how, how good of a man he is. And so, uh, I know that he had no intention or no foreknowledge of this, and so just, I wanted to make sure that y'all know that, that just as an individual, he's one of the best there is. So, and I, I appreciate you.
I wanna remind everyone that a motion has not been made, so we don't really have anything to discuss. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All right. Uh, motion and a second, so we do have some people that have popped in the queue since that time.
Mr. Chairman, my, uh, question is, uh, would be, we can handle it however we want to spin the rules, but it should just be a question, uh, to Mr. Suddeth, and there was one statement that was made that, that this, because of the way the zoning for this property currently is, a, uh, the property owner could put an equivalent, uh, building for red, for, excuse me, retail into the location that would have an, you know, a very similar impact. I don't, I, I don't know if that's true or not. I would just like to get, and I'm not saying anybody's making false, uh, statements. I just would like to get Mr. Suddeth's take on that statement.
Is there any objection? All right, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So you're, so the, when this planning and development was approved, there were a list of, of uses that were approved for it. Uh, mini-storage was not one of them, but a variety of other uses were. This particular parcel was, was, uh, reserved, or was indicated on the plan as being for retail uses. So essentially, like a little retail strip center, like three, three or four storefronts. Um, and, and so that, they can do that by right. That's something that if somebody wants to do that this coming month with the Planning Commission, they wanna file a site plan, they have the, an absolute property right to come in and do that. Um, it's a seventy-five hundred square foot facility. Um, this property owner, this applicant, is seeking not to do that. What they're wanting to do is, is add mini-storage uses, which is not allowed by the current PUDs, and they would be adding the use, and they'd be adding additional square footage. And so, uh, the number, the exact number leaves me running, it was about thirty thousand square feet of, of mini-storage is what they would be doing instead. So instead of a seventy-five hundred square foot, uh, retail facility with associated parking, um, it would be about thirty thousand square feet of, uh, mini-storage, uh, facility.
So just one, I wanna clarify in simple language. If a property owner wanted right now to put in seventy-five hundred square foot building, they could do it, and there isn't anything this body can do about it.
That, that's right. That's right. It's, it's entitled. Yes, sir.
The second, the second item I have is, question I have is, i- is there, in your opinion, a considerable change? 'Cause we're talking about a seventy-five hundred square foot, uh, building footprint versus a thirty thousand square foot footprint. Is there a considerable change to, uh, water and traffic if, you know, say we were to vote deny this, and then tomorrow, uh, the property owner decided to put in the seventy-five hundred? What's, what's the difference between those two?
Yeah. And so it's not necessarily a matter of opinion. It's, it's a data-driven thing. And so it's with traffic first. Um, they, one of the things Mr. Leith was referring to is, is he had his traffic, uh, uh, RJ Phillips, a traffic engineer, take a look at this property with its current entitlements. If that building was built, how much, how much traffic would it generate, based on the manual, basically? And compare that with the mini-storage. The trips per day was, uh, less than half, basically, with the mini-storage versus the retail use. Just 'cause you have fewer people coming day to day. Um, the stormwater, that's another quantifiable thing. That's not something that's really a matter of opinion. That's, that's a science. Um, but they're not to that stage yet, is the thing. Um, but our regulations, the county stormwater regulations require that, uh, the amount of stormwater that leaves the site, regardless of what you put on it, must be, must be equal to or less than what was leaving the site before you built it. And so the same, like, what it's doing today is a vacant field, the amount of stormwater that leaves the site per second during these rain events must be the same.
Just to, I just wanna make this, this part super clear. So whether somebody were to do a seventy-five hundred square foot building, which they're entitled to do today, or a thirty thousand square foot building, that, they would be required to mitigate water, uh, runoff such that it is less than or equal to what is currently measured?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Um, having to deal with, and this is not a question for Mr. Suddeth, but just more of a feeling for me, having to deal with, uh, citizens' concerns over traffic issues and safety for the last however many days. I understand what, um, the commissioner behind me was saying, that they basically could go back and put retail or whatnot there. But after seeing a list of, uh, citizens sign a petition because they're concerned about traffic, and then seeing something similar to that on a topic that we didn't get to put on the agenda tonight, I'm gonna have to go with the citizen concerns on this because, um, you know, traffic, if there's a concern of citizen safety with traffic, like the gentleman put up here before with that, plus the water, that concerns me. Maybe, um, I'm, I'll be voting no on this, but maybe, you know, perhaps they could bring this back to the Planning Commission, uh, maybe announce a meeting that the concerned citizens could come in and have these things addressed, that this gentleman had a, a list of petition, petitions names on. So that's what I would ultimately like to see, but right now, I just cannot vote in favor of this based on the traffic concerns and the other concerns that he raised, uh, tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I just ask that the commission think about what we'd voted on just right before this. Same thing, only except for when you go into the Dollar General, now you go left, go around the Dollar General parking lot to get to where these proposed storage units are at. We just turned down and said, no, you can't come in and go right. So, let's just think about that. And then we're looking at thirty-five thousand square feet of an impervious surface. No water absorption that's gonna run off and go somewhere. Where's it gonna go? To the neighbors it's already had concern, to one oh nine, which is a, a traveled roadway. And the, the citizen that spoke earlier is absolutely right. Saturday, there was probably seventy-five bags of mulch, I'm guessing, stacked up on the, I guess would be this new entrance way, should these, uh, storage units get approved, stacked up there on pallets. And I thought, what in the world is Dollar General getting ready to do with all that? Today, when I come to work, they're all scattered around this pond, getting ready to spread it. Haven't been back up there this afternoon to see if it was done or not, but I'm sure it is, just because we're coming here tonight. It's kinda convenient how that works. However, I would ask, um, that we, that we, we stand strong, 'cause the committee process matters. We say that all the time. If we really trust Planning Commission, this needs to be denied, because we just denied the same thing, only you turn left versus turning right, right before we had this.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pass by this property every time I come to Gallatin. Um, the Dollar General is located below the road. Um, this property will be located below one oh nine as well. Um, when Joey spoke just a minute ago, um, where West Roberts Road is, I remember the incident with the, with the high schoolers that, that got killed in the car wreck. They were trying to cross, somebody was trying to cross. That's a dangerous place. My daughter was hit coming home from Hendersonville. Same situation, just up the road at North Center Point. Uh, it's a dangerous area. Um, the neighbors don't want this. Now, I, I'm, I'm not oblivious to the point that something will go there someday. Uh, I've, in fact, I've expressed that even to some of the neighbors that I went to high school with. And they know that. Something's gonna go there. Um, but they wanna maintain this as long as they can. Uh, I will be voting no, because that, I, I'm sure Mr. Finney's a good guy. Uh, and yes, we need, we need economic development here, but I just don't think this is a good place for this, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did speak out earlier, um, but I've had a couple commissioners ask questions. So honestly, this has kinda been a two-fold, uh, two-prong decision for me, uh, to come to, and it's been one that I've thought a lot about, actually. Um, on one hand, uh, you have Mr. Finney, um, who I agree with, my fellow commissioner, is a fantastic businessman, uh, fantastic, uh, father and community member. I have nothing but the utmost respect, uh, for him. We've had some great conversations, uh, in the past about this and not. But on the other hand, I've got citizens who, um, have reached out to me, and, uh, you saw the petition earlier. I've had probably all of those people call me, uh, my, themselves, and not just sign a petition, um, and also, uh, more, uh, about this. And I've expressed to them, as my other commissioner, Harrison, said that this may be the, if they're looking at this as a bad option, this may be the least bad option. Uh, and they all echoed what Commissioner Harrison said, that they just wanna hold on to this as long as they can. Um, and I think the words were, they'll cross that bridge when they get there. Um, so, when looking at it for me, I have to remember, at the end of the day, I was elected by a majority vote, and unfortunately, the majority of the people that reached out to me and have said that this is not something that they can get behind, so I will, um, have to be voting no on this.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Call a question.
Um, that's not necessary. You're the last person in the queue, so. All right. Uh, I think that's on the board. We have a motion and a second, so that is on the board. To approve. The motion is to approve on this one.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
With a vote of nineteen to one, with two abstentions, it fails. Next, we have, um, county reports, and I would, uh, remind you that that's a part of your packet, and we had, will vote on notaries and then take ten minutes. Um, if the clerk will place that on the board. Do we have a motion?
No vote.
Second?
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right. That's a unanimous vote. We'll take ten minutes. All right. That's a unanimous vote. We'll take 10 minutes.